I call to order the Lynchburg City Planning Commission for Wednesday, August 22, 2018. Thank you all for coming. Thanks, Tom, for running things at our last meeting. We have two public hearing items today, and as we enter these, I want to remind folks that we do have some guidelines. These are designed to maximize people's ability to share their interests and concerns, not restrict them. And we do have some lights and all to help folks out. So, basically, if you're an individual, you're given three minutes. At one minute, the yellow light comes on, and when your time's up, the red light comes on. If you're representing a group, you start out with 10. So our first public hearing item is the petition of Michael Dillard for a conditional use permit at 3600 Campbell Avenue to allow the conversion of an existing dwelling into a duplex in a B3 community business district. Rachel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The existing dwelling at 3600 Campbell Avenue is zoned B3 community business district. Standalone duplexes and denser residential uses are permitted in this district upon approval of a conditional use permit. The comprehensive plan recommends mixed use for the area. As the name implies, these areas are planned for a mix of uses designed to mitigate potential land use conflicts. There would be no substantial changes to the site itself. The two units would be within the existing footprint of the dwelling. Approval of the conditional use permit would not change the underlying B3 zoning, which would allow the property to redevelop commercially in the future. The city's technical review committee reviewed the CUP request on July 31, and there were no comments of concern. The planning division recommends approval of the petition.
Great, thank you. Who is here to speak on behalf of this petition? You could come forward, sir, and sign in and state your name.
Good evening. My name is Michael Dillard. I live at 5763 Campbell Highway in Lynchburg, and I'm here to convert a single-family home at 3600 Campbell Avenue into a duplex, and I think the planner has just shared with you what I'm planning to do.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone opposed? All right, public hearing is closed. Questions or comments?
I do have a concern. I went out there and looked at the house, and I was having a hard time envisioning a duplex without major structural change to the building. And I was hoping that I would see some sort of diagram of how the building's going to be turned into a duplex, and where else it's going to go along with renovation. And I just am having a hard time seeing this happen. I mean, I looked at as much as I could at the building, and I see lots of requirements for structural repair that's neither here nor there, but I'm just concerned on how's that building going to be turned into a duplex.
Right, so I know the petitioner, Mr. Dillard, he may want to add to this, too, but I know he has been in contact with our building plans reviewer about what it would take to convert this building into a duplex, and he's confident that he can meet the requirements of, well, the biggest requirement would be a firewall between the two units, and he has discussed that and is aware of that requirement.
Okay. So it is using the existing building?
Right.
All right, yeah. And is the second outside entrance coming in from the back that's there now?
Mr. Dillard, is it the front and back doors will be the two doors to the unit?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other thoughts?
No, I mean, I looked at it, and I can't see anything but improvements coming out as a result of this. And the fact that it's right there on the main road, it's even more important, I think, to improve it and make it look good. And so, there's been a few things done there in the past in that area, and I think that's all resulted in good stuff, so.
Well, do we have a motion?
A move that we accept the proposal as stated.
Second?
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are recommending approval. Mr. Dillard, you get to take this up again with city council, so good luck with the project, and hopefully it will turn out well. Our next public hearing item addresses the downtown 2040 master plan. This represents a huge set of effort by many individuals over a long period of time, so I think it's important, even though it's quite extensive, that I actually read the entire item and get it on record. So, this is going to be a consideration of adopting the downtown 2040 master plan as part of the city's comprehensive plan 2013 to 2030. The plan builds upon the success achieved by the downtown riverfront master plan 2000 and establishes a new vision for the year 2040. Major recommendations of the plan include protecting the historic resources of downtown, public and recreation spaces, paid on-street parking, mobility and accessibility improvements, two-way traffic, refuge collection, and wayfinding. Adoption of the plan would amend the future land use map. The following area-specific changes are being proposed to the future land use map. Expansion of the central business district to include properties located along Main Street, including the 1600, 1700, and 1800 blocks, Elm Street, 1700 block, East Lynch Street, 1800 block, Garnet Street, 1800 block, and Concord Turnpike, 1600 block. Expanding the downtown designation to include the 1600 to 1800 blocks of Main Street, designation of downtown and resource conservation areas in the 1600 block of Concord Turnpike, designation of public parks at 1651 Concord Turnpike, designation of institution and public park areas in the 500 block of Main Street and Commerce Street, designation of institution at 99 Ninth Street and 27 Ninth Street, designation of public parks at 919 Church Street, designation of public use at 901 Court Street and 216 12th Street, designation of downtown at 1301 Main Street, 1201 Jefferson Street, and 1215 Jefferson Street. And in my four years, that's been the longest petition item we've had to date, so. Ann, you taking this one?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the planning commission. I just want to emphasize what you said. It's so exciting to be at this point, to be at the point of a planning commission public hearing for this plan. It's a major step forward, not just for the adoption of this one document, but for downtown as a whole. So much of what I'm going to go through, and Rachel's going to go through, you've heard before, but it's definitely worth summarizing prior to a public hearing. And so downtown Lynchburg has a lot of planning history, but the reason we're here today talking about this exciting vision for 2040 is because of this. These buildings were slated for demolition. They're the 600 and 700 blocks of Commerce Street, and they were going to be demolished for more surface parking. However, the citizens, planners, and public officials in the late '90s took a stand, and they decided that the status quo was not what was best for the city. And they worked to prepare, adopt, and implement the downtown and riverfront master plan in 2000. And that plan had really aggressive goals, and we've been working diligently on following them. And because of that, private investment has followed. These buildings that would have been demolished have now been renovated. They house downtown residents, shops, and host events. And had these buildings been demolished, these pictures would not exist. So almost 20 years later, here we are, and downtown is wildly different than it was in 2000. To continue the success and address new challenges that we just could not foresee in 2000, the city hired Hill Studio and its team of subs to prepare this plan. And David is here to answer questions after the public hearing. So this new plan is a blueprint, and it looks out to 2040, and it's really, it sets a higher goal, a higher bar for downtown growth. And every good plan has a vision statement, if I could click to it. And it's really, it's what we want, and by "we" I mean planners, citizens, public officials, what we want downtown to look like in 2040. And so what that is, is it's a bustling, thriving urban core. It's the economic, social, cultural hub. It's a destination for visitors and a livable neighborhood for residents. It'll be diverse, historic, unique, and vibrant. So that's a tall order, but it leads us to this overall illustrative plan. This shows many of the recommendations that we're going to go into more detail on. And so this picture, I really didn't think that much of it, but David pointed this out to us. It shows downtown today. We're doing pretty well. We've got renovated buildings, new businesses, recreational amenities, and we could stop where we are and say, hey, we're pretty good. What else do we need to do? We've done a lot. We've got public space. People are gathering in places downtown. We've got public art. But we've heard from citizens, and we believe ourselves that it could keep getting better, and that we're not done. So these are just some of the quotes that we pulled from the survey. So we heard all that, but then we also looked at the economics of the region and downtown, and we saw that it's really healthy. There's room for growth. So, again, why would we stop where we are? There's places we can still get to. So the study area, this is the area that we focused on, but we did look at key properties just beyond those red lines, as well as the corridors leading into downtown and the transportation systems that will affect downtown growth. Here's the future land use map that'll be enacted with this plan. The main changes are to incorporate more areas into the downtown land use category. So that's the existing, there's the proposed, as well as to make some corrections for institutions that are in the area, existing ones, and then implement this plan, specifically like new parks. You can see the space farther down Concord Turnpike is now designated for a park. So, public input on this plan, it was significant, to say the least. It was really the backbone of these recommendations, and it's more than we have ever done before. And one of the things that came out of all this public input was how much people really love the buildings downtown. They're absolutely one of downtown's greatest assets. However, there's not that much protecting them. Most of downtown is in a state and national historic district, but five years after tax credits are used to renovate these buildings, there is no more protection. The only way to truly protect these buildings would be to establish a local historic district. So doing so would need to be accompanied by design guidelines specific to downtown that balance both the growth we want to see downtown while also preserving what we want to preserve. So the plan also looked at some key sites downtown for adaptive reuse. These are just a few buildings that, for whatever reason, they have not been renovated yet, like a lot of their neighbors. So this plan provides some ideas on their reuse, and I think, in fact, there's actually already some momentum on these. So you can see 901 Main Street being converted into an event space. All right, so moving on, a major component of the plan is parks. Both, we want to enhance what we have, and then also imbue downtown with green space throughout. How do we stop concentrating all of our green space on the river, but really disperse it into the rest of the city? So Riverfront Park, it was a major success from the 2000 plan, and we heard over and over again how much people love it and how much people love the events in it. This plan proposes to formalize that event space with an amphitheater, so it'd be infrastructure that can actually handle the amount of use that the park is getting. This would need to be done through a public-private partnership. This one is right on Jefferson Street, and it connects to the Bluff Walk at the bottom of 12th Street. And that would also help preserve views from the Bluff Walk looking out towards the river. For Riverfront Park, we also have an alternative design to incorporate that amphitheater into the park itself. We are hoping to add the requested amenities like restrooms, playgrounds, more shade for people using the splash ground. We also kept the vision from 2000 for the trail along the river. And then, and while that trail would serve the same purpose, in the near term, this also proposes connecting the Blackwater Creek Trail to the Percival's Island Trail through Riverfront Park, rather than diverting bikes up onto the sidewalks on Jefferson Street. Canal Park's really an extension of Riverfront Park, and you can see how the bike trail runs through the park on the plan. It would run underneath the Ninth Street Bridge there in that photo. It also focuses on reinterpreting the historic canal and railroad elements as it's, you know, being repurposed for a new transportation option. So public input also emphasized the importance of the river. Gaining river access has been a goal since 2000, but it's really difficult in downtown proper due to topography and the presence of active railroad lines. So the plan proposes an additional park farther downstream where the railroad actually runs on the far side of most of the real estate, and Concord Turnpike could be relocated to be routed around. And in this location, you could get river access, as well as incorporate a number of exciting park features. For Clay Street Reservoir, we revived some of the exciting ideas from the Fifth Street Plan to repurpose it and create another park. And this would really help move some activity, park activity, up the hill into some of the neighborhoods, rather than focusing on only the river. And then we've got a dog park. We have more and more four-legged residents downtown, so we found a place for them at 12th and Gray Street. And City Hall Plaza, so this is a very small parking lot that I'm sure the parking spaces could be accommodated elsewhere. And this was really in response to hearing that on downtown streets, you feel like you have to constantly keep moving because there aren't enough places to stop along the way. There aren't public spaces throughout downtown, so we think that could really help accomplish that. Community Market, one of the most loved places downtown. This incorporates recommendations and to really activate this plaza, as well as use streetscaping to balance all the pedestrian and vehicular activity in the area. So it would actually be some kind of paving pattern extending out from the community market plaza into the street to balance the use between pedestrians and cars. So for trails, the plan also focuses on trails and key pedestrian connections to both, one, help encourage pedestrian activity throughout downtown, but also create, you know, exciting public spaces along the way. So specifically shown here, you can see that there's a loop to connect over to the park in Amherst County, where there is also river access. There's also a recommendation to continue the success of the Bluff Walk with extensions on either side, as well as adding the upper Bluff Walk on this side. And then lastly, for trails, there are a couple of hill climbs that would help encourage people to walk uphill rather than needing to drive throughout downtown. It also helps create another loop within downtown because it ties into the upper Bluff Walk, as well as trail extensions and the lower Bluff Walk. So Monument Terrace is an existing example of what we're thinking for these hill climbs. It definitely helps people move up the hill, and it also serves as one of the most special places in the city. The lower Bluff Walk, one of our newer public spaces, I said the plan proposes the extensions on both ends. Here, on the east end, it's shown connecting over towards the Carter Glass Bridge, which would open up more properties to develop along the way. And then here's a more detailed look at the upper Bluff Walk, as well as the Sixth Street Hill Climb and the 12th Street Hill Climb. Sixth Street would tie into the Clay Street Reservoir and tie it all the way down to the Blackwater Creek Trail, and we think that there could be a major theme along this corridor of incorporating stormwater elements into the streetscape. And then on 12th Street, you could focus on public art. And here, this image shows how it ties into that arrival pad at the community market. So finally, the plan, finally, as for Parks goes, we've got a lot more to cover. The plan looks at strategies to incorporate public space into underutilized street space. Here, more café space is being incorporated into Main Street by taking up just one or two parking spaces and really enlivening the streetscape. So now I'm going to pass it over to Rachel to discuss parking.
All right. Thank you, Ann. Moving right along to parking. 25% of land area downtown, or about 40 acres, is surface parking. That's not even including the parking decks. This is not a very efficient use of land. There's a lot of space right now downtown being dedicated to cars, just to sit there. Getting people out of their cars is what we want. They spend money. They make downtown a place to be. They provide the activity on the street that makes more people want to be on the street, and this is a recurring theme throughout the plan. So for parking recommendations, our current model has the most convenient and prime spaces available for free while off-street lots cost. We propose to flip this model. We feel it's more logical that a prime or convenient space should be the one that costs money, while off-street spaces could have a nominal fee, and we could even offset the paid on-street spaces with free one-to-two-hour parking in the decks. Of course, the idea here is to create turnover, which is basically getting people to park where they should be parking, meaning, long-term, you should be parking in an off-street lot if you're coming downtown for the day or the weekend, or even if you're a resident, while, short-term, visitors to downtown are able to make on-street quick stops because of the available paid on-street spaces. This plan considers new decks. When our existing facilities start to approach capacity, we're not quite there yet, but when we are, the plan proposes to rebuild decks or new decks with ground-floor retail uses like this. This is the Midtown Deck, could be reimagined into something like this, which doesn't look like much of a parking deck at all, but can actually house as many or more spaces. The idea is that people want to walk past shops, restaurants, et cetera. When they're walking past large stretches of parking lot or deck, there's really no interest to keep them walking down the block, and this sort of parking garage accomplishes that goal. My Dog Duke's diner is a prime example of the type of uses we would like to see in the ground floor of a parking deck. Moving on to transportation and mobility, thinking back to that vision statement, walkability is really a guiding principle and a cornerstone of this plan. When we think of walkability, we usually think of physical improvements like wide sidewalks, benches, shade trees, but it's also the, it doesn't have to be just physical improvements. It's also safety. How easy is it to get around? How easy is it to cross the street? What is the speed of the traffic light? Like, excuse me? Which leads us to this plan's recommendation for two-way traffic, environments, slow cars. It increases walkability for pedestrians. It brings, the more people we have on the street, again, more street activity is more favorable for a healthy downtown. Again, that's street life, it's money spent. It's also more navigable for visitors and residents. It reduces the need to circle the block if you miss your turn, or if you're looking for on-street parking space. There's also the possibility of easier detours, which we know are a reality with the ongoing Waterline and Streetscape Project. Also, the economic benefit for retail is that it gives equal opportunity for every business to be seen. So this is just an example of how a two-lane, one-way environment is not favorable for a pedestrian. This person is crossing the street. One person has stopped, but there's no guarantee that the other will, or if the other car can even see that pedestrian. And this is an example of economically how one-way traffic is less of a benefit to businesses because of retail eclipsing, which means basically that one-way traffic is moving faster. That allows our field of vision to narrow and giving us less exposure in the periphery for businesses on the side. One thing we've heard a lot about when we talk about two-way traffic is deliveries, and how can deliveries possibly work? And it's no secret that, right now, in downtown Lynchburg, trucks stop on the street in the traffic lane. You can see this at almost any time of the day. But why wouldn't they when they've been allowed to do so for a long time? Deliveries can be accomplished through timed loading zones, which need to be heavily enforced. Cities do this. We can do this. We need to get thinking differently and get past the idea that this is impossible because it's a very solvable problem. The plan also looks at increasing accessibility up and down the hills of downtown. Here we see a couple of new elevators proposed that can be considered when we're implementing new public projects, such as the Midtown Elevator, excuse me, the Midtown Parking Deck, which could have an elevator on the corner, or the Destination Amphitheater, which would greatly improve ADA access between Jefferson and Commerce Streets. It's a city of seven hills, but it definitely feels like a lot more than that sometimes, so we focused in several other areas on moving up and down the hills, such as the Hopper. Rather than moving back and forth among Main and Church, we, again, tried to move people up the hill. And another recurring theme is decreasing dependency on automobile downtown, and the Hopper is one way that we could do that. Connecting communities, we looked at how to increase connections, not only within downtown, but to downtown, especially between our adjacent neighborhoods and also our colleges that we have here in the city. We found that there's plenty of access to bus stops in many neighborhoods throughout the city, but headways tend to deter riders. It just takes too long for the bus to come. One way to combat that for our college population would be an express bus, which could run directly between campuses and downtown at particular times, again, reducing dependency on the car. And in the same vein, looking at how we can better improve bikeability. We have a lot of recreational bike riders, but there's potential for many more, either commuting to work, or people using bikes as a mode of transportation to get downtown for a restaurant or an event. Again, reducing the dependency on the car. One way to better accommodate bikes throughout downtown is a wheeling ramp, which is basically a gutter that you can push your bike up because there's going to be stairs. City of many hills. Also, looking at gateways, these are our arrival points into downtown, but they also connect our neighborhoods. These are our welcome mats. They form the first impressions and also last impressions for many people entering and exiting the city. This is a proposal for Main Street Bridge, which is currently under construction. It has excess capacity, which means there are more lanes than we really need to carry the number of cars that the bridge is serving. So the proposal is to reduce a lane in each direction and provide a bike lane with separation, which makes it much more accessible to not only bikes, but safer for pedestrians as well with the separation. And John Lynch Bridge, one of the most beautiful views of the downtown skyline, again, has excess capacity. It's not bike or pedestrian friendly. There's really no facilities there now, other than the lane marking. So the plan proposes a multi-use path with some sort of separation from, you know, to allow bikes and people to be separated from the cars, and this would connect directly to the Amherst River Edge Park, talking about those large recreation loops that Ann was referring to, too. There's also another similar connection under the Carter Glass Bridge. And our last major gateway, this is a long-term project, but many enter Lynchburg for the first time through the 460 and Concord Turnpike area, which is not necessarily the most welcoming. It has a lot of industrial traffic. There's the landfill, the wastewater treatment plant. This plan proposes the James River Parkway to separate visitors from that. Concord Turnpike would remain open for truck traffic. So that's a pretty brief summary of the presentation you got last time. To wrap things up, downtown has come a long way, and we feel that there's room left to grow. We think this is the blueprint to get us there. It does set high goals and ambitious plans, but so did the 2000 plan, and look where we are today. And so, at the last work session, there were some items that were suggested for consideration. We are looking for consensus. I mean, these were kind of just thrown out by individual commissioners, so we're looking for consensus on whether you want to add these. If you can't see Nancy, I can bold these out. That'd be helpful.
Yeah, so we're just looking for specific direction on whether or not we want to incorporate these into the actual document.
All right, we'll visit those.
Want to come back after the public hearing?
Yeah, I think it's after the hearing. Get some more input. Great, thank you. And just a reminder, folks, that the entire plan is available at downtown240.com, and there's also some nice summaries on there as well, if you don't want to read the whole plan. So since the planning division is the petitioner, we're going to move on to the public hearing part of the petition. So is there anyone here from the public who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? If you could come forward, sign your name, and state your name.
I'm asking for people in favor of the petition, right now. So we'll get to you in a minute, sir. All right, so people who are in favor, come on up, sign in. I can't comment. It's so extensive that I can't comment.
Okay, we'll get back to you in just a few minutes.
Do you remember the lights?
Yeah, just a reminder with the individuals, three minutes with the light green, yellow gives you a minute. gives you a minute, and red means wrap it up, please.
Alrighty. My name is Victoria Bartholomew. I live in downtown, but more importantly, I love downtown. I work on historic homes and buildings in this area to help bring them back to life and become contributing structures again for our community. Cannot tell you how excited I was to read over the 2040 Master Plan, and more than excited how proud I was of this community and the vision for its future. In particular, the emphasis on the importance of making downtown Lynchburg much more pedestrian-friendly, with greater importance on the human experience versus the focus on the car. The implementation of two-way traffic as a part of the Master Plan is, to me, one of the most important aspects we can take on immediately to propel the remainder of the plan forward. Two-way traffic has been shown to increase safety, increase business visibility, slow traffic, provide more parking, and create greater ease of travel for both pedestrians and vehicles alike. Our downtown was built with two-way streets, and was only turned into one-way streets to move people quickly through downtown, not wanting them to have to stop in an area of the city that the government and the citizens alike had mostly abandoned. If we now see value in downtown, why would we keep a travel pattern that was designed intentionally to remove people from it? Every study you can find shows that smaller and much larger communities have not only benefited greatly from this system, but have found a way to make it work successfully for decades. I believe much of the fear exists from questions that were previously unanswered about deliveries, specifically for our restaurants and retail establishments. Concerns I understand and believe this plan addresses. However, it will be imperative that the city enforces new regulations having to do with loading zones in order to make it work. Something that is not only possible, but should be ongoing now. We currently have an issue with these deliveries blocking traffic, but instead of accepting an issue, not properly addressing and moving on, I think it is time we face it head-on and not let us block us from our exciting future. I urge you all to accept the Master Plan as presented, so that we can provide an aspirational game plan of sorts, not only for our current citizens, but for our future developers and those considering making Lynchburg home. Downtown has provided a reason for young people to stay and come to Lynchburg, and has an enormous economic impact on our city. With this Master Plan, I believe that the city government and the citizens can be on the same page of where we want to be. I believe in this city and cannot wait to help create this community that we all want to be a part of. Thank you.
Others in favor?
My name's Dan Hague. I'm a historic restoration property developer in downtown. Projects that I've created so far, Rise Up Climbing on Church Street, Red Point Lofts on Main, Red Star Lofts on Main. I'm one of the originators of the grassroots market concept. Currently have five houses on Cabell Street that we're restoring. And I've got a big project on Church Street just about to kick off, $5 million restoration of 25,000 square foot industrial space. I am on the Board of Directors of Downtown Lynchburg Association, and I'm President of the Board at Grassroots Local Market, which, by the way, opens September 1st. I'm not from Lynchburg, so what prompted me to invest so heavily, time, money, effort, energy into the downtown? So, in 2005, after just arriving in Lynchburg, I met Rachel Flynn, and was introduced to the Master Plan that she spearheaded at that time, the 2000 Master Plan. And I saw the investment that the city was making, both in terms of money and also in vision of what the downtown could be. I saw opportunity, as long as the city continued down that path, and they did. My investment in downtown is a direct result of seeing the city follow through on its commitment to better the downtown according to that agreed vision. So, we now find ourselves at another crossroads, in which decisions will be made that will affect the redevelopment of downtown in the future. And I've read the proposed Master Plan 2040 from cover to cover, maybe one of the few who have, and I can say that I back it wholeheartedly. In conclusion, I'd like to echo what a city planner asked at a recent meeting concerning the proposed Master Plan. He asked, "What does the city where you want to live look like?" And I got to say that my answer is, I'd like it to look like what's in this Master Plan. Thank you.
Others in favor?
I'm Jeffrey Kirschner, and I'm representing the Academy Center of the Arts as their Executive Director. I'm here to speak in favor of this Master Plan. The first thing I'm going to talk about, I know there's a lot of discussion regards to parking and two-way issues, and I'll speak to that. But what I would like to speak to you first, actually, is the improvements to the park. Our organization produces a four-part concert series each summer in Riverfront Park. We brought George Clinton, Blues Traveler, Wanda N' Judd here to the city, and we plan to continue to invest in that. We feel it's a commitment to the city that we have to provide accessible tickets and public events to the city, and that park is extremely useful to us. With that said, we have a lot of added expenses in producing those events in regards to infrastructure. So, the staging units are extremely expensive, all of the rental sort of packages that go with that staging unit are extremely expensive, tents, porta-potties. I've never thought I'd learn so much about porta-potties in my life, but I know a lot about them now. So, all of that infrastructure that is being suggested, either in the public-private endeavor or the alternative, are both very beneficial in our abilities to continue to do this. And it is, there are financial concerns for us always in producing that, and underwriting is really important, but anything we can alleviate budget stress on that allows us to do more in the park. So, want to definitely support that. Our facility, the Academy, is going to be expanding, and we're opening up in December a theater that has been closed for 60 years. It was a theater that was initially closed on a one-way street, and has remained on that one-way street for 60 years, a closed place. There hasn't been much traffic, foot traffic, in that area of people moving in and around it, and that's about to change drastically very soon. So, starting December 6th, which will be our first public opening event, we're going to have tons of people, 200 nights out of the year, probably walking across that street on a regular basis. Is this?
A minute.
I thought I had 10 minutes representing our organization, is that wrong?
If you're with a group, we can reset it for seven more minutes.
Thanks.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, the first thing that I want to talk about in regards to that is, and the conversion to two-way traffic is safety. That picture of somebody crossing the street and a car there, and then not being able to see around, that has actually personally happened to me on multiple occasions, where buses stopped for me. I could not see around, and even to see around, where I'm poking my head, and the next thing I know, a car is picking up immense speed, right, because it also has two blocks to pick up speed, because Sixth Street no longer exists, right, has come very super close to hitting me personally on a number of occasions. And so, it's slowed down a little bit right now, because we have construction vehicles there, and so, we are still dealing with that, right? We're going to poke our head around. And so, that's a real, real concern for us. We want people slowing down, so people can get across the street. And there's going to be a lot of people, particularly if a show lets out, or opens up, that people are moving in and out across that street. The second is wayfinding for us. It is, anybody coming in from outside the city, they're inherently coming over the Fifth Street Bridge, they are going to think that, in seeing where our building is, I'm going to turn left. And we see it happening all the time. People are turning left, we've seen crashes up there, we've seen people get into wrecks. It's only going to get worse, right, as we become a destination point. It's just counterintuitive, it doesn't make any sense. The second, the third thing for us is it also helps us easily move around our campus. Right now, we're sort of forced to continually go around a block, and not just around a block, but very often around two blocks, because again, Sixth Street, right, is a walkway now. So, we're, in order to get from one end of our facility to the other end of the facility, we're going to be doing these giant circles in and around the facility. The other is our drop-off location. For those who may need assistance, or who are elderly, there's a turn-off, drop-off area that is on the Fifth Street side of the building. It is just a few yards up from the entrance point to the Holiday Inn Deck, which will be a main parking location for our facility. So, basically, that means if you park, if you drop somebody off and you want to quickly get to our most accessible parking, you again, right, have to take a right, you have to go all the way around the block, right? It's confusing, it's maddening, why am I having to do this? It's right there, right, I can take a left, I can get into the parking area. The other thing for us is marketing and awareness, the idea of what we see. So, we're obviously going to be putting things out in our facility about what's playing and who's coming to the facility. We want people to see that, we want people to get excited. Obviously, we have other means of marketing, but the slower people are going, and the more that they're looking around, the more that it's going to be visible to them, what's happening in our facility, what's going on, and the more where they're going to be at those things. Finally, is just development. And that is that we really benefit from having as many restaurants around us as possible. People, right, if we're going to pull people from Netflix, and, you know, things that are going to keep them in their home and get them out engaging in a public activity, they need to have a full experience, a full night out. And so, we want them to come, park, walk to a restaurant, have dinner, walk to the show, after the show, go to another restaurant, grab a drink, whatever, right afterwards, and have a full night in our city. So, we have a lot of empty buildings on that end of Main Street. You know, we have traffic zooming through there, I don't think it's super attractive, right, for development right now. Luckily, we have the Virginian now, we do have restaurants that are there, Fifth Street is starting to develop, which is a two-way street, and we have restaurants opening up there. But the more that we can get restaurants in and around us, the better off that we'll be in terms of our long-term growth. So, just to finish this up, you know, this has been a, which we are really grateful to the city, this has been a major public-private and corporate investment to make this possible. It's been, all in all, a $30 million project. We all want it to be as successful as it possibly can at that level of investment. And for our general operations and our ability to thrive, that two-way conversion is really, really important to us in the long term. So, we support this plan, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Others speak in favor?
My name's Blair Godsey, business owner, developer, with significant investments in downtown Lynchburg. My projects can be seen from Fifth Street to 12th Street, Jefferson to Church. In total, in about the past eight years, represents about a $50 million investment in downtown Lynchburg, most recent project being the Virginian Hotel. You know, I was, first, obviously, two-way traffic, I think, is probably one of the most contentious things within this plan. I was going to talk a little bit about that. I am very much in favor of two-way traffic, and, but, you know, more importantly, in favor of the plan. You know, much of the investment that we made beginning in 2010 is because of things that were set in motion by the plan that was adopted in 2001 by council, which I think the most recent plan builds upon in a lot of really wonderful ways. And so, you know, I'm really here today just to, you know, to say that I really support the plan, and that I hope that y'all will listen to the public and the people and the professionals who have made these recommendations, and support the plan in its entirety. I think overlooking any of the things that are in the plan, or even eliminating some, could be very, could be a big mistake. So, thank you very much, and appreciate your time.
Great, thank you. Others in favor?
My name is Philip DeVos. I'm with the Virginia Canals and Navigation Society, and it's really wonderful to see the great transformation Lynchburg has been making over a decade now. It's amazing. It's nothing like we used to see the city. But it's time to do a few more things down along the river. And one of those that really appeals to us at the Canal Society is doing something to interpret a very unique history alone Lynchburg's, back when that area was humming with the canal and the early days of the railroad. I'm sure most of us are aware that Lynchburg led the nation in per capita income, and it's because of what happened on the river. We'd like to see that interpreted. And you've got some beautiful biking and hiking trails right now. And when those three, there are three that come together right there at Ninth Street, I think it'll really bring a tremendous focus to that area. And we'd like to help with the interpretation, working with the city, and with other groups of volunteers, historian. I'm looking forward to what Nancy Marion has to contribute to this history, as she is so very familiar with it. So, I'd like to, I have some literature to hand out to some people who might wish to even become familiar with it this evening, and looking forward to the changes to come. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, sir. Others in favor? Opposed? Anyone who's opposed would like to come up and share their opinion?
And actually, I am very much in support of this plan. I think they have done an excellent job of, well, first of all, my name's Rodney Taylor, and I own Market at Main on Main Street, and I love almost everything in this plan. It's bold, it has a bold and creative vision for the future of downtown, and when we implement it, will help continue the incredible momentum created by the original Master Plan. There's only one thing in the Master Plan that I hope you will consider changing, and that is the two-way traffic. The conversion of Main Street to two-way traffic would have a significant negative impact on my business. Because of the weight limit on the Midtown Parking Deck, almost all of my deliveries come through my front door. The conversion to two-way traffic would make it difficult for me to get deliveries, and the proposal to convert many of the parking spaces. The answer to the delivery problem is to convert the majority of the parking spaces in front of my business to loading zones and through 11 o'clock. Breakfast is one of the most important things to me, so the option for me is giving up the access of my customers to be able to get to the restaurant. Also believe that the, right now, and today is a good example, for almost a year, one Main Street would have been one-way. During the construction of the Academy, that one lane in front of the Academy has been blocked consistently for a significant period of time. Today, there's a crane sitting in front of Pacific Life. I drove down Main Street, went right around all that, and there were no problems, no body flagging, nobody having to put up detours. Conversion, the ability to navigate down Main Street was very good. Also, buses, city buses, in front of the Free Clinic, there's no place for the city buses to pull off. So, they stop in the line of traffic, and they do the same again in front of BWXT. So, I think, you know, that is something that would make it more, less friendly for people going navigating downtown. And I do think the three- and four-way stops at Seventh and Eighth Streets have worked. And I think it will, as far as slowing traffic, and I think the conversion to 10th and 11th to the same system will be even more helpful. One thing, in one of the slides that showed Eclipse Buildings, it's on page 133 of the Master Plan, but those buildings simply do not exist on Main Street. And those buildings include IWT, SunTrust, the Bank Building that is being renovated, BWXT, Opera on the Jane, Pacific Life, and the Academy. Finally, I think, as one of the merchants on Main Street, I'm scared to death about the construction that's coming. We're going to go through a significant period of disruption to our business. Businesses are going to close on Main Street because of it. During that period, it, which is going to, two years in front of me on Main Street, but for 10 years, and I've got like one sentence left, 10 years for downtown. but for 10 years, and I've got like one sentence left, 10 years for downtown, to convert to two-way traffic, and with the uncertainties that that brings would, is, makes a lot of the business owners that are here tonight fearful. So, City Council voted unanimously not to convert to two-way traffic. Is my hope that it will replace the language, calling conversion to two-way traffic, to language very similar to what was in the original master plan, and that was that it's something we may need to be studying in the future. I think that's reasonable, I think that, you know, that you could pull the language directly out of the original master plan, and I think, you know, not to say, we're never going to consider it again, let's get through this construction, then, then take a look at it in eight years, 10 years, and it may be very reasonable to do at that point. I love this plan, I want to love 100% of it, and I hope you'll consider making this one change. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Others oppose?
Hello, my name is Melinda Tennis, and I own a business on 1019 Church Street. I think that making two-way traffic on Main and Church is a bad idea. The amount of construction and changes to signs and to people's ability to move downtown is not warranted by, I haven't seen any actual facts of how two-way traffic has improved business in the, the cities who have implemented two-way traffic. I would be interested to know if there's any great increase in business and in tourism. I think that enforcing the speed limit on those streets would tell visitors that the police department and the city is, thinks that citizen's safety is important, and I think it wouldn't, it wouldn't cost anything to enforce the speed limit if that's the what, one of the reasons to make two-way traffic. And I think the rest of the plan is, is very ambitious. I, I think it'll take more than 20 years to do all those things, but mainly, the, the two-way traffic and paid parking are two very bad ideas for downtown Lynchburg. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition? Would you like to come forward?
My name's Ken Toler. My, I love the plan, but I'm concerned about the two-way traffic. There are a couple of things at play in that. One, I talked to veteran firefighters, and they said trying to get the fire trucks turned into Main Street with two-way traffic is going to be burn, baby, burn. These trucks are so big now, that trying to get down there with two-way traffic, get people out of the way, and the ambulances are no longer vans, they are trucks. So you've got a major problem there. As far as controlling speed, your police department's traffic department practically doesn't exist anymore. They don't have manpower to be writing speeding tickets. You drive around Lynchburg now, try getting her to the park mark where I am, next to the Cavalier. You better come out of there like a thoroughbred on the Kentucky Derby day, out of the gate, and that's two-way traffic. You look at that, you look how you plan on narrowing down the corners. I have no problems with four-way stop signs. I went to University of Mississippi, and we call them the poor man's traffic light. I don't have any problem with traffic circles, they're great, but when you start narrowing that down, and you start looking at safety, you may think you're improving at one end, but you're really damaging on another. And as far as saying Main Street was made one-way to get people out, I was born in '51. Main Street was changed to one-way in '54. I can remember going on the bus to get downtown all the time with my mother to go shopping and stuff. We had one car, my father was a city fireman, we lived near TC Miller School. Downtown was booming. It didn't change until, you know, Pittman Plaza and stuff were years later. I've been a supporter of downtown, I was president of the community market, I volunteer with all sorts of groups, and I'm a big supporter of it. But you've got a lot of people, small business owners have a lot invested, and they're seeing all this construction going right down Main Street, and they're scared they're not going to make it. I would recommend you follow Rodney's suggestion, that you put it in there like it was before, and it's something to be dealt with, because right now, this is the most divisive issue you've got on this, and that's where your resistance is coming from. Put this issue away, and you'll get support for the rest of the plan. But I think there's a lot of false information being given about two-way traffic. There are studies out there that show two-way traffic doesn't improve, and I think a lot of that's been hidden. So I love the plan, but two-way traffic, that's where you're going to get all your resistance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition? Others? All right. Rachel and Ann, as petitioners, would you like to offer rebuttal to any of the dissenters? Or just keep moving?
We can keep moving. I will say that the plan did contain case studies about the economic benefits of switching to two-way traffic, and David, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Is this, this not the same microphone we had at the, the other part? Okay, good.
It's much better.
No, we, vans, right, we, you know, we, we did, we did study a number of the issues regarding the size of streets, et cetera, and decided it really could take, two-way traffic really could function in a well in Lynchburg and in downtown with the, with the street corridor widths that you're given. The, and you know, since we had Wade Walker on the team, we felt very confident in his abilities, so when, we went back and, and were challenged to, to find other case studies, you know, everyone you find, it tends to be written by a lineage of Wade Walker and, and his mentor, Walt Kula, who were sort of the, the people who really started to bring a, a lot of, a lot of 21st century traffic planning into, into North American city planning. And so, you know, a number of things, I believe Mr. Taylor is right, you know, that we don't want to create an environment which loses parking or one which makes deliveries impossible. And so, that's sort of the next phase, is to get to a case-by-case study, you know, when, when that gets into design, of how to accommodate each block as it's transformed. But from the citywide perspective, from the downtown perspective, we feel confident that we'll be able to solve those kind of problems at that detailed level.
Great, thank you. All right, at this point, the public hearing is closed. As we enter our discussions, I do want to point out that we went through something similar when we revised and updated the zoning ordinance. We spent several years working on it, and we didn't get it perfect, and we spent years after that tweaking and fixing and updating it. So whatever the end result here is, I guarantee you, it will not be perfect, but it's not set in stone either. We will certainly be going back and revisiting it and fixing things. So thoughts? Do we, do we want to tackle the two-way traffic and kind of get that off the table? Because that's going to be the big topic, both here and with council.
I had a question.
Yeah.
One of the people.
Yeah, you want to?
Yeah, I want to ask Rodney a question.
Yeah, Mr. Taylor, you want to come back forward for a question, please?
I just want you to clarify, I, I think I heard and I wrote it down, but did you say you did support like four, four-way traffic stops, four-way stopping intersections?
Yeah, and I wasn't sure about how that would work when it was first proposed in the first construction phase of the streetscape, and I think it has been a market improvement. And I would actually hope that that would happen on 10th and 11th Streets sooner rather than later. There's more pedestrian traffic on 10th Street than there is on 7th Street.
Thanks.
While you're up here.
Sure.
Okay, your, your big concern is getting rid of your customers' parking until 11 o'clock, because you might have a beer truck or Coke, well, because there might be no traffic.
Well, there would be, there would be no ability for people to park in, in those spaces.
Right, right. It would be confined to loading. Can you control, and I would think you can, what time your, your suppliers come? Can you get them to come at six, you know, from six to eight, or something like that?
So we, and when this was first proposed, when City Council rejected us, we did work with our suppliers and look for solutions to that, with a number of them we can. Our primary food vendors already, we, we were there for a stop. They come out of Roanoke, and they drive directly to us, they get there usually between 6:30 and 7:00, depending on how long it took to get the truck loaded and get, and get underway. So we, we try to get them in and out, because sometimes it takes an hour and a half for them to unload, frequently, at least an hour. So, they're in and out of there very quickly. Some of the other, the vendors that we cannot control, and, and maybe collectively, and some of it, I, I really don't understand the thing. Coke will deliver downtown almost daily. They will come to Domino's one day and to us the next, and they come whenever they want to. We can't, and I talked to them, and they said that it depends on routes, depends on schedules, it varies day-to-day, and so, my, my person I deal with at Coke said it would be very difficult for them to, to guarantee specific time slots. The other issue is the beer trucks. They potentially, they would have to, because they can't go in the back parking deck either, and this is something I didn't realize until I talked to them about it, they have to be out of the Food Lion, Kroger, all of those major stores by 11 o'clock. Those stores, and obviously, they care a lot more about them than they do, so they are typically at those stores until 11:00, and so, that's why you see them making the deliveries to us, to Rivermont Avenue, you know, to downtown, in the afternoon. The only option with that, and we never did get to a point, after City Council threw, we never did get to the point of discussion, was them coming to a point, offloading from their trucks into another van, and then bringing a van that could come to the back door. So we did explore those options, but, you know, we would certainly, it would have to lose a significant amount of our parking in the 900 block to delivery zones until 11 o'clock.
I, I don't have that particular block in front of me right now, but I don't understand why we couldn't move it down in front of High Peak Sports, where it's still the same block, right?
Yes, and that's an option, and actually, I spoke to Tom Martin about that.
They don't open until probably 10 o'clock in the morning, so they wouldn't be losing anything, of course.
Yeah, and that, you know, so I think, things like that are, are options, but the, the other thing, I don't know what, and again, I just because I don't understand the nature of their business, however, but, you know, Domino's will have a truck in front at all times of the day and night.
They'll get tickets, too. They will get tickets, whether, whether it's one-way or two-way, they should be getting tickets.
And they are, they're often there for, again, well over an hour, sometimes two hours, right on that corner. And like I said, I don't know what they're doing, why, why it takes so long, but, you know, there doesn't seem, one of the managers told me, and I don't know, this is not from an owner or anything, so that, that they didn't ever know when those deliveries are coming, and it's controlled by corporate, and depending on, you know, the difference when Liberty's in session, that there, the truck just shows up in front of the store.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
So, Rachel, as a follow-up, you mentioned, I mean, right now, there's no enforcement, so even if things don't change, the delivery system as it stands probably won't last, all right? I mean, the, the trucks that are stopping in the roads are doing it illegally.
Well, the city attorney, I think, has said, the way he reads the code on a one-way street, they are allowed to do that.
Okay.
So if I wanted to go to the bank and there wasn't a parking space, I could park in the middle of the street for 10 minutes, and they wouldn't bother me?
I wouldn't try it. Like I said, it, it's currently the norm, you know, right, wrong, or indifferent, that's, they're, they're being allowed to do it.
Especially if there's paid parking. I'll just park in the driving lane.
Just need a bigger truck.
I could do that. Okay.
So Rachel, if, if, like, retail establishments can, can specify delivery time, can the city code do that in certain areas, or is that?
Yeah, I think we could, that could probably be incorporated in the city code for downtown streets specifically.
It seems like there, there might be some workarounds, you know, but if Mr. Taylor says, well, I'm here waiting for my food, and like, well, you're, you're just marking on Main, you know, but if it's a, actually a, some type of legislation that requires that they can't come down, can that change the scenario?
Right, absolutely, and keep in mind, I mean, the delivery company's job is to deliver material, or deliver goods. They want to get these goods to the endpoint, I mean, they want to make the money. I think if there's a restriction like that on the books, they'll figure out a way to make it work.
And with, I don't know, how many restaurants do we have downtown now, 20 or so? You know, Market at Main is...
On Main Street.
Pardon?
On Port Street.
On Main Street. I mean, you're not the only one getting Coke, so if they can only come after 11 o'clock, that's, that's a lot of blocking of traffic, and, you know, we can't have it, so, I think.
And I believe, actually, some city staff members have talked with the delivery companies themselves, and they have indicated that they're willing to work around schedules that would be good for everybody downtown. And that's correct. When the previous effort to convert was underway, before City Council pressed pause on that, most delivery companies said, thanks for the heads up, you know, when we, when we reached out to them and said, what about two-way traffic? Does this work? And they said, thanks for the heads up, we'll figure it out.
I do have one other concern slash questions, or some comment was made about the construction on Main Street. Is that in conjunction with repairing and fixing the infrastructure underneath the street, or dealing with the 2040 plan?
No, that's the construction to replace the water lines down.
So I'm just, I'm asking you to answer, I just want to make sure it's public record that has nothing to do with the 2040 plan, but we are dealing with antiquated infrastructure underneath the road.
Right, that needs to happen regardless.
Yeah.
So however, when we replace those water lines, we will be doing streetscaping along with it. So if there are recommendations in this plan, such as the Main Street arrival pad that might overlap with the construction area, we would hope to go ahead and start implementing some of those things.
It seems to me that when the construction happens, if you shut down a whole block to vehicular traffic, which, you know, Charlottesville's whole Main Street is shut down to vehicular traffic, so, you know, it's possible people, Lynchburg had a plan at one time, I mean, there was a plan floated to get rid of all traffic on Main Street and make it a mall. So if you can shut down a whole block, and you've got two-way traffic around it, people can move around however they want, they can get to it from both ends, from all ends, and seems to me that would make it a lot easier than if we had two-way traffic and we shut down a block, which apparently is...
Right, yeah, I'm not a traffic engineer, but it seems logical to me that this would help with the detours, absolutely.
I, I have another question for David. There were two comments, Ms. Tennis and Mr. Toler both, Ms. Tennis said she hadn't seen any actual facts about improvements in city, cities implementing, implementing two-way traffic, and Mr. Toler says there's a lot of false information about two-way traffic. And, and so, can you, have you seen studies that two-way traffic is, has a negative effect? And, and so can you, have you seen studies that two-way traffic is, has a negative effect? I mean, I know you've seen all the studies on it, so that's your business. So are they all in favor of it, or have you seen lots of studies that say it's bad?
Well, the, the, yeah, as we mentioned, Wade Walker's our expert in the, in the traffic, and, and he's written a number of the studies, and in fact, he included several case studies that are in the book, that are actually some of his projects that he's implemented from one-way streets to two-way. I believe they have one on Chattanooga, we have one on somewhere in Florida.
In one of the appendices.
Pensacola.
Pensacola, Florida, I believe West Palm, Florida as well.
So these are three examples that he felt were very relevant toward Lynchburg's case, you know, size of the project, et cetera, size of the street. And, and, you know, if, and the question that, that there are studies of these that haven't worked, but they're hidden, well, there must be, they're, you know, they must be, they're hidden to me, I, I don't, I don't know, I haven't hit any of these, I don't, you know, I'd love to see them if, if, you know, if we wanted to enter those into the debate. And I think we could also, you know, enter in several case studies of ones that have worked. So, so if, if we want to put together kind of a research piece on that, we'd be happy to, to do that, but.
And I believe Wade indicated that he hadn't seen studies in the other direction as well either.
I, I do know, and I just was reading the other day too, that if you search for something, if you Google something, you can find, if you want to know if walnut shells will cure cancer, you can Google it and you will find somebody selling walnut shells to cure cancer, and they're going to say it does it. So I'm sure you can find studies that say it's bad, and you can find studies that say it's good. But what you're saying is the studies you cited are the ones that are relevant to a city this size and shape and with the demographics we have.
Yes, ma'am, that, that's why we chose those.
I have a question, might be more traffic engineering. You know, one of the things I have noticed, and I really like the improvements we've made, 9th Street, you know, some of the turns are tough though. I like, I like, I like the two-way, I, I like how they look, I like how the, the curbs have been put in, but when you talk about, Mr. Toller mentioned fire trucks, and I think that it would be very hard for a fire truck to turn from Main on to 9th, because if a car's there, I've actually seen pickup trucks that can't make that turn, because they're, they're, they come up, someone pulls up a little bit too close. So is there any, any change in the way the curb, the curbing is made and the radius of the turn, they're very sharp, do, or is that something that would be more of an engineering?
Well, yes, in fact, Mr. Toller's right, you know, fire trucks keep getting bigger, and ambulances, which used to be the size of suburban, are now the size of a truck, you know, they do get bigger. And the, the design standards now for a lot of those corners is to, is to, you don't, you don't put street furniture or anything right there in the corner, because in a situation like this where in an emergency, they'll roll over that lower part of the curb. And even though you certainly don't, you don't encourage that, but the, the good design now allows for that kind of situation to happen, so that, so nobody gets stuck, you know, so that the, you know, the part where we tip the, the curb down for wheelchairs and, and less able folks to get across, that's also a, a rolling area for rolling stock. And you, and you harden it underneath so that it has enough strength to hold that on.
And I'll just add to that also, you know, a major emphasis of this plan is walkability. One design feature in a streetscape to enhance walkability is to actually keep those curb radii, the, the turn there, very narrow, much smaller. As we built streets, and, you know, post-war, bigger and bigger, they were built for cars, and they had these big wide turns that made cars be able to just zip around them, which is great when you're out in suburbia. But this is our downtown, we want the cars to have to go very slow, slowly, as they make these turns in our downtown streets. So it's actually by design to slow traffic down.
Is one possible, you guys know more, a whole lot more about traffic than I do, but might a fire truck that did have a hard time negotiating a tight right turn, because it's, it's right turns we're talking about, might they just continue in basically the same pattern that we have now, as if it were a one-way street, go around the block taking lefts instead of rights? I mean, I think that the firemen who drive those things have, will figure out pretty quickly what's the easiest way to get to a certain spot, and if it means, you know, they'd get their best taking left turns, they got big sirens and lights, so nobody's, everybody's getting out of their way.
That would make sense to me, and I'm no expert, but there's certainly, you know, narrower, cities with narrower streets and harder turns to make than we have.
It's just like UPS guys all make only right turns, and so I think fire trucks could probably make a lot of left turns.
But I'm sure our fire department knows the best way to access every point downtown. And I saw some of the comments, or heard some of the comments specifically about emergency access, and I went to our transportation engineer, I said, is there any validity to this? And his indication was that two-way or one-way, it works. And he did acknowledge that in some, some intersections are tight for, for larger vehicles, and he indicated that going forward, we'd be paying special attention to the curb radii for those larger vehicles. The plan doesn't get as specific to, to get into the details of what a curb radii should be, but that is something that's on his radar and, and he's aware of, and he is on board with.
Yeah, I mean, just, just for the record, when it comes to two-way traffic, initially I was against it, but over the years, looking at the presentations and reading about it and hearing all the data, I've changed my mind. And, and I have made a right-hand turn on a Main Street, and I'm one of those people who've gone the wrong way. So it's a, it's, it would behoove me to have two-way traffic. If we, if this petition moves forward as stands, and council liked everything but two-way traffic, they would have to send the whole thing back, right? They can't make tweaks like that at that point.
I mean, I believe they could direct staff to make that edit at that phase.
Okay.
I think there was a comment about the size of the fire trucks coming down the road to way traffic. And if I'm not mistaken, it is a state, if not national, requirement that you move to the size of the road in event of emergency vehicle coming down the road, goes down your lane or coming against you. So I, I don't see any reason why a fire truck or, or box-sized ambulances running downtown would have any opposition from traffic if everyone's supposed to be a good driver and pay attention to what they're supposed to do on the road. And those that don't will quickly learn that, no, their car is no match for a big fire truck.
I think the only other major topic before we get to the specifics is parking. We're never going to solve that completely in terms of making people happy. I think it's one of those things that will be tweaked as we move forward in terms of paid lots versus unpaid lots. We've seen that happen before around the community market, where we've made some adjustments and then tweaked them again. So I'm not as concerned about that. I, I think the ideas are solid, and what we're trying to accomplish in terms of making the city more walkable is good. I've not always gotten an ideal parking spot, I've never turned around and gone home because of it, I've always found something, and I think that's what most people are going to be experiencing. So do we, if people have more thoughts on parking, that, two-way traffic and parking is, have always been the two big things that have popped up.
Well, I know, I love to be able to find a free parking space in front of where I'm trying to go, and that's great, but I, I don't usually, and I never find one when it's raining. But I, I certainly agree with the, with the idea that you should put paid parking in the most premium spots and put free parking in the, you know, the lots or the, the places more remote. That would be great if you could park for an hour or two free, then if you can't afford to park right in front of the bank or the store, then walk a couple of blocks, it shouldn't kill anybody. Do we have handicap parking on the street? Is that built into it? So that's free? Or is it?
Everything, everything is free on the street right now.
Well, would, would it be?
You know, that's getting into the weeds a little bit.
Yeah, it is.
I imagine it.
But I would think, you know, not everybody can walk from a parking lot.
Right.
But, but I do agree with the premise that you should pay for it if you want the convenience, and it'll certainly be more available. So if it is raining and I want to pay a quarter or whatever it's going to cost to park in front of the bank, I can do that probably, which I wouldn't be able to do without the paid parking. The, the main thing, now, remember what I was going to say. The main thing about parking, as we've been told, is there is plenty of parking downtown. It may not be where you can find it, but now that we have new parking signs telling us where you can park, what time you can park, and how much it's going to cost, and the new, the new, whatever we change it to will, you know, change the signs, I think people's perception of parking downtown will change once they see that, oh, I now know where to park, or I know, go over there and find a parking space. So I think parking should not be an issue going forward.
All right, so let's, I think those are the big general topics. We can cover these work session items and then make a decision on whether or not we would add each of these to the petition.
Yeah, so maybe we should just hit these one by one. The first was recommended by a commissioner last time. It's the use of temporary road closures to create pedestrian-only streets at certain times of the week and year, and this could certainly be added into the plan. I think other cities do it, most notably in my mind, Paris, they shut down the street right along the Seine and turned it into a beach every summer. So it's, it's a tool that we could add, you know, it's a tool for.
We do it downtown Lynchburg.
Exactly, we do it for downtown Lynchburg. So maybe, I don't know if it does need to be included if we do it anyway.
It doesn't hurt having it in there, it's not telling us we have to do it.
Sure.
So I think it gives, having it in there gives us the options, especially since we're already doing it.
Sure. Second, this came up last time as well, narrowing Rivermont Avenue on the northwest side of the bridge, particularly on the inbound route. And I think there was generally consensus, but we wanted to be sure before we started edit, doing any edits. This would just be a continuation of the streetscape improvements on the bridge. There's really not much sense in having 100 feet of much wider street just beyond the bridge.
And we can finish the bike lanes too.
And that would, that would add bike lanes.
Yeah, it gives it some continuity.
So I'm taking the general nod as yes. Maintenance of the hillside next to Rivermont Avenue sidewalk approaching 5th Street. This came up afterwards, I think it's the hillside beneath the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance, and it gets overgrown regularly. It's getting a little detailed to start specifying that we need to cut our grass, but we could, we could put a line.
Unless we have a space for gateways, do we have a section on gateways?
So the Rivermont Avenue Bridge improvements are within the gateway section?
Okay.
I mean, that just seems to be awfully specific.
Yeah, I think that's too specific.
To a task that we should be.
Is it city right of way? Is that owned by?
I'm not sure exactly where the property was.
It is, it is, city maintains, doesn't maintain it, but yes, they're supposed to.
Okay, so we can skip that one.
It should be maintained so people can walk.
Next, testing traffic patterns during large-scale events. We thought about this after the meeting, and we're thinking maybe during a large event is not the best time to start drawing new traffic patterns out, when people are already pretty confused.
Like Liberty comes back to school?
Don't know about out there.
I think if, if it's the use of temporary road closures, that, that first bullet, that would be fine.
Right, I think this commissioner was thinking that during, like, Get Downtown or something, we might temporarily implement two-way traffic or something like that. And I think that might just add confusion to test that traffic pattern and then switch it back.
I think that's confusing.
And next is making a bike connection to Liberty University. I think this one is actually already, already done, it might not be all that clear in the plan. There, with Odd Fellows Road project, they're adding a shared-use path along there. The trail extensions shown in this plan connect out to that. And then once you get to that Odd Fellows Road shared-use path, you're basically at Liberty's campus, and it's probably up to them to make sure there's a connection to the main part. Placing bike share at the edges of downtown. Great idea. I don't think at this point we know how the bike share program would be implemented or where the station should be. I think maybe we could tackle that once we actually find a vendor, and we would actually be implementing it and figuring out what would work best.
I think that's the list.
Okay. That's the list we had, was there anything we missed?
So we're leaving out the bike share thing, right?
Yeah, I think I heard to make the changes for the first two.
Yeah, I, yeah. I think.
I'd love to have a bike share program, but that can, that can be done independent of.
Well, the plan does recommend implementing bike share. At this point, we just don't know where the station should actually go.
I know that one other thing I brought up was charging stations in parking decks and.
That's right.
Because people who work downtown, drive downtown to work, park in the deck, if they've got electric cars, it would be convenient if they could charge their car before they go home.
Right, that could be incorporated into maybe the mobility hub section. And that's within the parking chapter.
Make those parking areas get more attractive.
And that's for electric vehicles, correct? The, the charging stations, yeah.
Yeah, well, you were talking about phones, but, yeah, whatever.
I had a conversation with Nancy where I suggested we have charging stations at our bus stops, for people's cell phones, when they're out and about.
Covers all the specifics? Any other general comments or thoughts?
Still look forward to the zip line.
I was talking to several people about this, and they, they, they weren't very supportive. They, they had their struggles with the two-way traffic, and they said, you know, we, why, why don't, you know, we could do something like Charlottesville, you know, have, have a, a pedestrian walkway. And, you know, my encouragement to him was to look, look forward and realize this is a 2040 plan, and if you really want changes, you actually have to start moving forward in some way. You know, I think this is a great way to move forward, at least kind of directing us to do some things differently. And then I reminded him also that Charlottesville's traffic on either side of their pedestrian downtown is two-way as well. So he's like, well, that's a good point. So I think it's a, I mean, I know it's a struggle for some businesses, but I do think that the burden is on, on the city to really help alleviate that and put a little bit of teeth into regulations so that it makes things like delivery easy. And when I've eaten downtown, like at Market at the Main, I've only been able to park in front of it one time. I always use the deck, and if it's free, that makes me really happy. So, so I like the parking changes as well, I think that's a nice thing.
Would you be interested in putting that in as a suggested edit about the city code being amended?
Oh, I thought, I thought that was in there, I thought we had, had done that.
Right now, the plan just proposes timed loading zones, but there's not a city code.
We talked about earlier having that as part of the code.
Yeah.
Is that something you?
Can that, can that be written in a way that?
Possibility.
It could be considered, but not?
Oh, right.
Not written, not required.
Other than the future land use map, nothing in this document gets, gets.
Right.
Implemented the minute you say yes.
Right, so things like the historic district.
Like the historic district will require a separate public hearing to actually be implemented.
I think that actually might help the businesses, because they can say, this is not our decision, the city says you can only come during these times. I mean, it kind of takes it out of their hands a little bit, and I think the delivery people will find a way. So I would support something like that. And I would actually defer to you all if you thought that was a good idea, I mean.
Right, it could also be coupled with the restriction for parking and travel lanes. So prevent Nancy from going to the bank and taking up the travel lanes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, two, two or three weeks ago, I, I think I had mentioned it, that I was blocked at one point by a Coca-Cola truck and a beer truck that were, end of one was at the front of the other, and there was a tractor-trailer that was trying to get by them. Whole Main Street just was shut down, no one could get through. So it, two-way or one-way, you know, it doesn't really matter, people still will block the road.
Right.
So that's, that's why I think the, it's important that there's some more teeth in the restrictions. the restrictions.
Any other comments or things that we have missed? So...
I will make a motion.
Yep, they have a motion?
Based on the preceding findings of fact, the planning commission recommends city council adoption of the downtown 2040 master plan as part of the city's comprehensive plan 2013-2030, including amending the future land use map as shown on page 39 of the downtown 2040 master plan.
Second?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are recommending approval and a reminder to folks that this goes to council for their official decisions, so I would encourage you to offer your comments for and against when that happens. Any other items for discussion? Any other upcoming events? All right, so next meeting, September 12th. Motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, we are adjourned, thank you all very much.